Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'll start with Roll Paul, uh, call the meeting's order, and start with Roll Paul and Farley.
All right, Mills.
June Gagnon.
John Meyer.
Farley DeShardans.
Roz Chivik.
Ryan Bright.
Mary Ann Chanati.
Katie O'Neil.
All right, so there are no appointing of alternates because all members are present. So, starting with public hearing, Z 2022 2275 of the Planning and Zoning Commission, applying for the amendment to the zoning regulations for accessory dwelling units, ADU. Did you want to present for the town, Ryan?
Sure, I started off last month, I'll briefly go through it. We're modifying the regulations that used to be called accessory apartments. The more updated term for it is now accessory dwelling units, and that is what we're going to, it's losing all restrictions a little bit. So, previously, we had the ability to have a 600-square-foot accessory apartment attached to the house, direct pass-through, had to be joined by a common wall or floor. We had a lot of complaints throughout the years that 600 square feet simply wasn't big enough, one bedroom only, one bathroom. One of the biggest complaints we had was people in wheelchairs had a difficult time making their way around 600 square feet, just didn't allow for enough room for a larger bathroom, turning radiuses. So, the only thing that we recognized is that we had never denied an accessory dwelling, never denied accessory apartment that met all the regulations. The formality had come before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a special permit, which is a two-month process at the bare minimum, plus 600 and $10 feet. So, the commission discussed changing that in allowing for apartments similar to what we currently allow by special permit, attached to the house, direct pass-through, putting that to the zoning officer and having the zoning officer approve it as a use as a right. So, just like if you're building a house or a shed or garage, it simply goes to the zoning officer and not to the commission. Under those regulations for attached dwelling units, ADUs, you're allowed to now go up to, or you would be allowed to go up to 900 square feet instead of 600, but still have to keep it joined to the house, direct pass-through. So, that was one of the main things we did. Now, it kicks into special permit category, which has to come before the commission. If you have an attached ADU, if that's over 900 square feet, or if you'd like to be over 900 square feet, or more than one bedroom, that would have to come to the commission. Also, our regulations currently do not allow for having an apartment above a garage, like in a loft, even if it's attached to the house. Like I said, you have to have direct pass-through, so if you had to walk down into the garage and then enter into the garage door to get into the house, that's currently not allowed. That would be considered to be a detached accessory dwelling unit, because there's no direct pass-through, that would have to come before the commission, whether it is possible. Also, you could, you would be able to have an accessory dwelling unit in an outbuilding. So, if you have a detached garage or something, and you want to put it in a loft apartment, you could come before the commission for a special permit to do that. So, that's, that's kind of summing it up, that's what the commission wanted to do, and so that's what's before us now.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone with a question or a comment on this application, step up to the microphone, your name, your comment.
Hi, I'm Art Gagnon. I was here before you last month, and I'd still like to reiterate the three things that I would like to see done. I would like to see the ADUs stay by special permit, all of them. I would also like to see lot size restrictions, as in multifamily, and I think the maximum size should stay at 900 square feet, I think that's the logic. Last month, I stated that zoning regulations 7.21A, 7.22A would also have to be changed. RA 40 zone, RA 60 zone allows for only one dwelling unit per loft, and that's what it states in those. And I looked up the definitions, dwelling unit is a building or part thereof containing complete housekeeping facilities for one family. A family unit would be one or more persons closely related by blood, marriage, a committed relationship, adoption, or fostering, occupying a dwelling unit, and living together as a single housekeeping unit. With that said, if 7.21A and 7.22A were to change to comply with the ADU regulations, would this take away from single-family zoning in our town? Because ADUs can be allowed for any single-family home, so are we going to take away our single-family and just go to multifamily zoning? I had a question last week about sewer use, would this be, because of two dwelling units, would it be two sewer uses now? Also, I asked about tiny homes. I did some research, California is allowing tiny homes to be hooked up to electricity. I asked also about ARBs, and since then, I did some more research, and I'd like to know about prefab ADUs, because this is a big thing. I looked up Connecticut ADUs and what other towns are doing, and they're somewhat allowing for that. And my last question would be about fire safety. With doing an ADU in an attic or a basement, would this be a problem with fire safety? Would the fire department even know that there's two dwelling units in this house? So, if I guess some of those, and also, would it require two exits in a basement or an attic? Those are my questions, thank you.
Ryan, I'm correct that if we were to approve an ADU, if it's not by special permit and it's by right, then those permits would go through your office?
Correct.
But they still also have to go through the building office?
Yes.
Which would take care of entrance, exit, fire safety, so they're still required to meet building code standards, so it's okay. And then as for consistency with zoning, if it's by right, then as long as it meets the regulations as outlined here with square footage, then you would be the sign-off on the by-right zoning permit? And then for the detached?
Over, over 900 square feet would be a special permit, the detached would be a special permit.
Okay, so all detached are by special permit?
Yes.
So, it's only an attached?
Only attached up to 900 square feet.
So then, for example, a tiny home would have to be special permit?
Yes.
Because that would not be attached to the property?
Right, and we don't currently allow for traditional tiny homes, which are built on trailers, it has to be on a fixed foundation.
And then when it comes to sewer, once again, it would have to meet whatever requirements are there, so whether it's city sewer, or if it's a dug well and septic, then it would have to meet whatever requirements are required by the Department of Health?
Yes, so if it has a septic system and well in a property, the health department does have to review and approve the plan. If it has public sewer, I believe that is an additional sewer use. I believe that's how they do it now for accessory apartments.
So, there would be an additional approval necessary for that, to ensure it meets those guidelines?
When it goes through the building department, it also is picked up by sewer.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications. Any other comments or questions on this application? Any comments? Yeah?
Walter Sweeney, I'm the chairman of the Plainfield Conservation Commission, Musa. I see, I see in the previous regs that this Item H on 1228, no more than two people shall occupy an accessory apartment. In the amended regulations, I don't see any, any kind of limits on how many people that can be in these, these ADUs. So, will there be any limits on how many people, and, you know, two, five, you know, once we get to one, and how many, whatever is considered reasonable? I wouldn't like to see it be abused, as far as, you know, how many people can live in an ADU. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in Section 7.28 of the standards for the accessory dwelling units, it does limit it to not more than one bedroom.
For by right.
For by right.
You can have two bedrooms under special permit.
Okay, so by right, it's limited to one bedroom. So, it's not limited by number of people, but it is numbered by, limited by the number of bedrooms?
Right. Reasoning for that is if you have a mother and child that wants to move back to one of the parents, you can have, you know, if they're kids and they're in one bedroom, they can be in the other.
Any other comments or questions from the public? I don't want to hog up the questions. Any comments or questions from board members, for staff or otherwise?
I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, June.
Well, I still have a hard time having one person decide, having the CBO decide to make that decision, make that choice.
So, rather than have it by right?
Well, by right, yes, then he does it, but if something comes before Planning and Zoning, you have a whole Planning and Zoning Commission here available, so that's my feeling.
So, you would want all applications by special permit?
By special.
As they are now?
Right, I don't see the reason for changing that.
Sure. And Ryan, could you clarify, because I know you had looked at some other regulations in regards to this, what the process is in other towns?
Oh, um...
I'm sure it's terrible.
Killian Lee is, is much more relaxed than we are, we have, you can have basically two-family homes, Brooklyn allows for, for two-family homes. Crawford is actually more relaxed than we are as well, they adopted more localizing what the state was pushing. So, yeah, other, other towns are, are more relaxed than we are.
Do those towns go through the zoning office, or really go through on front of the commission?
Same as this, Sullivan's by right, Sullivan's by special permit, but they allow more by right than we are in these regulations.
Yeah, Mary Ann?
Just a couple of things regarding whether or not something comes to the commission. You could consider having the 900 square feet or less attached still be as of right, but the zoning permit would be issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as opposed to the zoning enforcement officer. That way, everybody would get to weigh in, but again, for as of rights, if they meet the regulations, they're approved. That's number one. Another question I have is with the detached units, if something, if there's a detached accessory dwelling unit proposed on a septic system with NDDH review, when might a community septic system then be required?
Oh, community septic systems are required for far more extensive uses. You're not going to have a community for, for one apartment in one house.
Right, but accessory dwelling units, if it's a separate building, will they allow it to hook up to the existing septic system?
You would have to get a, an exception from the state, I know that's what's required for a garage, I don't know if they would allow it for an apartment, it probably requires a separate septic system. At, at least a separate tank, they might be able to use the same leach field, but at least it requires a separate tank.
And then I also have a concern about the word accessory. Now, the regulations as written, if adopted this way, they would allow up to 100% of the square footage of the primary dwelling unit. So, if, for example, I have a 1,200-square-foot house, and I want to add a 1,200-square-foot accessory apartment, then I no longer have an accessory apartment, I've got a two-family, because 1,200 square feet addition is not accessory to anything, that's the same size, so it's, they're two principles, you know?
When I read, I saw 75% of the livable, 75% of the livable fourth area, the primary dwelling.
Right, that is for additions and detached apartments. The way the regulations are currently written, if it's going to be on the second floor of a house, or in the basement of the house, it can go up to 100%, simply because otherwise you'd have to section off a portion of the upstairs or the basement to not be part of that living space. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
And again, that makes the accessory apartment no longer accessory, but...
Duplex.
Duplex, exactly. And in the commercial district, it allows more than one accessory dwelling unit, so I would question if you, for example, have a building that has a commercial, 1,000-square-foot or 1,200-square-foot commercial business on the first floor, and it's got an entire second floor available, that's 6,000 square feet, let's say. The regulations as written, you could create accessory dwelling units in that entire upstairs, so they would no longer be accessory to the commercial use.
The regulation's currently allowed for that, though.
In mixed use, yeah, so...
But it's under a different part of the regulation, like Plant Development District or...
No, it's in, in the accessory apartments.
So, then they would apply for accessory apartments, not accessory dwelling, if they want multiple units?
No, but, so all accessory apartment regulations being overrated by these.
Including, okay, then I need to read something.
The way, the way the accessory apartment regulation's currently worded for commercial buildings is if you have an existing commercial building that has a second floor, like in a downtown area?
Yep. Like a both-plex?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, I think it might have been implemented for that specific building, you could have multiple apartments, so I just continued on with that, except now it doesn't have to be an existing building, you could actually construct a building with a, you know, a traditional Main Street-style commercial with apartments.
Okay. I have an audience member who had a comment or question.
Well, that was on the septic system, you were already back, I mean...
Okay.
The Board of Health will dictate what you can do. If you have a three-bedroom house?
Right.
That septic system is X size, you add another bedroom, you're going to have to put on another septic system.
Could you answer to two of my questions that you didn't get to, referring to lot size restrictions?
In the RA 30, 40 zones, is that what you were asking for?
No, just lot size restrictions. Multifamily requires RA 19, half-acre per unit, RA 30, three-quarter acre per unit. This, we have no lot size restriction at all. So, right, you know, it, it just, it, it seems cumbersome to me to, to allow ADUs in quarter-acre lots, and, you know, of that size especially. And the other thing that I asked was about the zoning regs, 7.21A and 7.22A, allowing only for one dwelling unit per, are we, are we getting rid of single-family zoning by doing this?
Well, we, we currently allow for accessory apartments, it's just, this is relaxing the regulations, so at least still only one accessory apartment for a property.
So, just for background, for anyone who hasn't been following the issue, the state had passed some legislation that would have essentially mandated that towns allow for accessory dwelling units. We opted out of that legislation, so now it's on us to develop our own regulations that are a little more allowable, but still within our control. So, that's why we're here today, and why there's a lot of different issues to review on it. Are there any of our comments or questions from the audience? Come on up to the mic, say your name and your comment, please.
Hi, Sylvia from Musa. I just have a question for when they do a resale on these buildings. Will it be the same as selling a single-family home, or, or anything like that, or will there be restrictions, or when you have an accessory, whether it be attached or detached?
So, it is for the life of the property, correct? So, when they sell that home, they would sell it as a home with an accessory apartment?
Yes, if you have, if you have a two-family home, then it kicks it into a commercial mortgage, but the banks do not consider an accessory apartment or an accessory dwelling unit going into the property now to be a two-family, it's simply a single-family with an accessory apartment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, I have some questions that I think would justify this being continued. I would like to look into a little more closely the lot size issue, also having, having it by right but approved by the commission versus keeping it special permit the way it is now. So, I think perhaps we might want to schedule a discussion for members on that. I do have a concern about allowing 100% living space, regardless of whether it is a basement or an attic, because once again, we do want it to still be an accessory, which means it should be secondary to the primary dwelling. So, those are some of my concerns that I think justify, and I can contact staff separately to work on some of those revisions and questions, so that it can be a little more detailed next month.
Right, and as these are your regulations, there are no time limits, you can continue this for as long as you'd like, and also, if you want to scale back, you can do that as well.
I have a question. Can we schedule a special meeting to discuss this?
We can.
Instead of...
Yeah?
...of all the other business?
We absolutely can. So, I will work with Katie and Mary Ann. If board members want to have a special meeting about this, hash out the provisions. Okay, so I'll connect with Katie and Mary Ann to schedule that. All right? All right, so, given that, I will entertain a motion on this public hearing.
I want a motion to close the public hearing.
Nope, continue.
Continue. Continue the public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion by Roz to continue, a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, continue to next month, and we will schedule that special meeting to review in more detail. Item B, Z 2022 2283, continuation of United Ag and Turf, I believe we were missing a butters notices?
We were.
Okay, was this opened last month?
No.
No, so are we continuing without opening?
Correct.
Okay.
Tableau.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to continue without opening the public hearing. I have a motion by John to continue without opening?
Second.
A second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, continue to next month without opening. Item C, American Industries requesting special permit for earth excavation at Zero Norwich Road and Rude Road, Assessor's Map 5, Block 3, Lot 1, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
My name is Kyle Hopper, from CLA Engineers in Norwich, here on behalf of the applicant, American Industries. I have for you several plans, I also have some smaller scale plans, just to go through. Thank you. My name is Kyle Hopper from CLA Engineers in Norwich, here on behalf of the applicant, American Industries. Here tonight for proposed earth excavation and removal at the intersection of Rude Road and Norwich Road. To orient you guys on the map, Rude Road, you can have the west side, right here, and Norwich Road, 12, along the property. The proposed property is about 103 acres, the proposed excavation will be located on about 32.6 acres of the property. You can see here shaded in, right to that area there. The property is in the RA 60 zone, and the last use on the property was cornfields out there.
Was what, I'm sorry?
Was cornfields, cornfields, yeah. The project is an earth material excavation, it's going to be sand and gravel, excavated and removed from the property. There will be no processing material on site, it'll be strictly an excavation and removal The excavation will take place over nine phases. You see here, phases one through three along the southern limits of the property, and phases four through nine along the southern edge. Topsoil for each phase will be stockpiled and will stay on-site for restoration purposes. The sand and gravel will be excavated and removed, and again, there'll be no processing material on-site, so it's strictly an excavation and removal project. The nine phase, broken into nine phases, to stay within the, below the five-acre maximum guidelines set by DDP. Approximately 627,000 cubic yards of material will be excavated and removed as part of the project. Truck traffic will exit the site on Rude Road, right in this area here, and they'll be directed to Route 12 for their deliveries. The project itself, the ratings for the project has been designed to essentially excavate themselves into a bowl. Excavation will take place away from Rude Road, from Route 12, and will sheet clove settlement basins along the south here. This area along the Welling's Edge will be excavated down as well, so there will be no stormwater discharge from the site, everything will be excavated into a bowl, and everything will sheet clove to the settlement basins along here. Main settlement basin along the southern edge here will be constructed as part of phases one through three, a supplementary basin is proposed over here as part of the last phase, Phase 9. All of the stormwater, as I said, will sheet clove to these basins, they'll be stored through the 100-year storm, and will discharge directly to groundwater and infiltrated into the ground. As excavation progresses through each phase, the last part of the excavation for that phase will be restore the disturbed areas, topsoil will be placed along the slopes, and cement will be placed on all of the disturbed areas, which calls for either erosion control matting to be placed on the disturbed areas, or high-received with a fiber stabilizer. Erosion set in the pavement controls throughout the project are shown on the plans. The main entrance here will have a vapor, track it onto the town road. Temporary stockpile areas throughout the project will be surrounded by soap fence or hay bales. Dust will be managed by a useful water truck on-site, and all of the slopes will be limited to a maximum of 3:1, to keep them stable based on the nature of the material. And as I said, they'll all be stabilized with either erosion control matting, or high received, depending on the contractor's decides. Should any erosion occur within the excavation, because of the way it's rated, it graded into a bowl, it will all remain within the excavation. For a wooden roof, the site, for the Welling's, for the town road, anything like that, it will be contained within the site, and the operators are required to restore any, any disturbed or eroded areas. The final product, once all the excavation is complete, will essentially be a large brass open field again, essentially what's there, that is signed. We have gone through the Welling's Commission, they approved that at February meeting. We've also, I believe, addressed all the town staff comments and the town engineer comments, if there are any... If there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question, please step up to the microphone, state your name and your comment or question, please.
David Young, owner of 1362 to 1376 Norwich Road, which is adjacent to Rude Road. I have two pictures here, just of the corn trucks that came out of that field while they were taking the corn out. I don't know if anybody can see them, but that picture is of the front entrance of my building, my office building. There is probably four inches of dirt, and the trucks could not swing out of the road without going in my driveway. There's another picture of Rude Road. Now, that was on a regular day, no rain, no nothing. You add rain to that, you're going to have a mud pit there. Also, I don't oppose this, but exits have to be changed, and one through nine have to be put back as they're done. When number one is done, it has to be put back. When number two is done, it has to be put back, all the way to seating. They can't go on to two without doing number one first. Otherwise, every neighbor that lives on Route 12, Rude Road, even the back roads, are going to have more dirt and dust in their house than in that field.
Thank you. Is anyone else with a comment or question on this application?
Hello. My name is Linda Topper. I live down on Topper Road, of course, from Roots Field. And as I was coming down the road the other day, it was just blowing sand. And I was thinking, nobody, these people are not going to be able to ever open their windows in the summer. You know, it's a breezy, windy day. Also, it was told to us that when the end of Topper Road was gravelled, that it was going to be returned to original, you know, the way it was before, and that never happened. So that's another of my concerns, is that the property will be restored to what it was. Do you have any idea how long this is going to?
I can address that, yes.
Okay.
And just address your comments to me, and I'll redirect them.
Yeah. I'd like to know how long they think they're going to be there, because it's already being gravelled. I don't know who's gravelling it, but yeah. My concern is, is the dust and the sand and everything else coming off. Like Dave said, that, you know, dirt in his driveway and mud and everything else. Okay? That's it.
Thank you. So applicant could just address a couple things, and then I'll get right to your question. So do you have a timeframe, timeline for each phase?
Yes. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that, yes. The entire project is intended to take over a three-year period, depending on market conditions. And to address one of the comments as well, each phase is required to be restored before they move on to the next phase. So there will be topsoil and erosion control madding or hydroseated over the disturbed areas before moving on to the next phase. And to address the tracking onto the town roads, vehicles are generally exiting through the far fields directly onto the town road now from the farming activities. So there's no anti-tracking pads, no paving or anything like that on property trying to prevent tracking onto the town roads. As part of this project, we are proposing a paving for the connection to the town road. We're also providing a radius on each side of the paving so that the trucks leaving the site will be able to make a turn onto the town road without dragging material and then tracking onto neighboring properties.
Okay. Also, while you're up here, screening plan, dust mitigation, what do you have in place for those?
There is no screening or processing on site. It'll be strictly an excavation and truck offsite. The dust will be mitigated on-site, with a water truck will be staged on-site, and water will be used to mitigate the dust.
When I mean screening, I mean like vegetative buffer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant ground screening, sorry.
How are you keeping dust on the property? That's what I'm referring to.
You'll see along the Route 12 corridor through here and through this area, it's pretty heavily vegetated through about phase six. So we're proposing to leave the existing vegetation along Route 12 untouched. There's a 20-foot buffer between the property line and the start of excavation, so all that vegetation will remain in place along the 12 corridor.
Okay. And this gentleman next?
I'm Steve Topper from Norwich Road, and I would just like to point out, I don't understand why this is being zoned now because it's being excavated for the past two years. If anybody on the zoning board would like to take a ride down Route 12, you can see where it's been excavated for the last two years. So why is it up for zoning now?
Brian, can you address the previous activity and how we got to where we are today?
Yes. There is a cease and desist for that activity, which they did.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
That went through the zoning board?
Yes. So a cease and desist, meaning they wanted to stop, and that brought forth this application.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment or question on this application? Any other comment? Oh, yeah.
Well, does Sweeney ever chime in the conservation commission again? I'll start off with, we have a PLC Plan of Conservation and Development in Page 34. There is, under Agriculture and Farmland Goals, line seven, it says, "Suggest limiting future gravel excavations in areas of important farmland soils." Okay. That being said, I have some maps of important farmland soil.
Thank you.
I have four copies.
Okay. I was going to say, do you want to pass it around?
Okay. So that being said, if you look at the map of this property that's being proposed for gravel operation, it's pretty much all prime or important farmland. All those circles, the numbers correlate to a farmland classification chart that I have here that we obtained from a website survey, farmland classification, State of Connecticut. So all those numbers, the, for instance, like 38A, 23A, 103, on and on and on. Like 29A is considered prime. 29B is considered prime. 23A would be a star, so I think that's important. So it's either important farmland or prime farmland we're looking at here. And it's been like that for generations. And as a conservation standpoint and ag standpoint, I think we should at least consider the prime farmland before you make a decision on allowing this to be another gravel operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, have you all had the opportunity to read the Plan of Conservation and Development?
To some extent, not the entire.
In regards to this application?
Yes. I have seen that.
Okay. For those who are not aware, the Plan of Conservation and Development is a framework in which we determine how we want the town to be used over the next 10 years. And it's redone every 10 years, and it's used as a framework and guideline for the regulations that we create. So the goal is to have the regulations and the uses consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. It is a framework and a guideline, so it is moldable. It's not regulation, but it is a framework and a guideline for the regulations for those that are not aware. Hold on one moment. So I would suggest that the board take additional time to review the Plan of Conservation and Development, to review the regulations, and to review the prime farmland maps to determine if you feel it is consistent, just to have all the information necessary to make a good informed decision. That would be my suggestion. This is still an open public hearing, so I saw two hands in the front row. You would step up to the microphone with your comment or your question.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Paul Sweet, 260 New Road, Musa. That's my mailing address. I want to address the comments that were just made by Mr. Sweeney. The idea is, the Rude family's been here a long time. They're a farm family. And the whole idea of stripping the loom off and that taking 100-and-so acres, we're talking about 36 acres, leveling out that field, putting the loom back down, and growing corn or growing hay. We're not getting rid of prime farmland. Farmland is still going to be there. Fact of the matter is, they're going to mine the gravel, and then they're going to back with the loom, go back over it, and plant corn. And they're hardly, they certainly are within their right, if they come through the board or commission here, to get permission to mine the gravel, but they're playing by the same rules as everyone else, that's hauling gravel out of the playing field. They're going to meet the regulations, the special permit, just like the application says. So knowing the Rude family, knowing the gravel operation, and what's going to be required by the special permit, you also have the ability to, for a bond, a maintenance bond, maybe even a performance bond. But the fact of the matter is, there's 80 people that work for American Industries, a lot of them live in Plainfield. Job security is important to these people. They're one of the major prime contractors for paving for the State of Connecticut, some towns and cities. When I look at something like this, I look at not only job security, but the chance for jobs to be grown, the grant list to grow, and tax dollars to be brought in. But I don't want to sit up here and not rebut the comments made by the chairman of the Conservation Commission. I'll go on the record to tell you, every meeting that I've gone to, they're against everything that's being proposed in this town. And it's about time, maybe the leadership's going to have to take some notice of this because, quite frankly, you're doing your job, and they don't need to be telling you how to do your job. Now, the Plan of Development, when I was in office, called for development going south of this city because there were no larger parcels of land anywhere any longer. So what do we find? We find farmers that can't make a living farming. They find out they have these minerals, so they're selling the minerals. I just think it's important that you understand something. The farmland is not going anywhere. However, if someone comes along and proposes some type, let's just say, I don't care if distribution seems to be the thing right now, some kind of a distribution center on a 100-acre property, very possible, the rail system's behind them. So to come up here and say that the farmland, whether it's prime, whether it's secondary, whatever you want to call it, the fact of the matter is, there's still going to be farmland when it's over. So, you know, I just think that's, that argument is stop something from going forward, from people to work. And I just think that something needs to be said about that. I'm glad that engineer here talked about track and pad because it's necessary. You need to pave that acre, you need to put a good track and pad in place, and obviously a water truck or a sweeper truck will be there on-site also. So I just want to put that issue that we're going to destroy farmland to rest, okay? Because we're not. And I'll leave it at that.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry. What was your name?
Kai.
Kai. Would you step up for a moment?
Sure. Yep.
Sure.
Mr. Sweeney essentially covered what I wanted to say.
That's okay. I have a question for you, just a clarification.
Sure.
So when we look at the depths of the excavation?
Yes.
What is, because you mentioned creating a bowl so that materials stay.
Yep.
He mentioned just leveling off.
Yep.
So could you clarify what you meant by a bowl? What are the excavation depths?
Yep.
And then when, when or how the leveling off would occur? Because if you create a bowl, and then you're going to say it's level at the end, that, you could clarify.
Yep. Yep. I can show you. I can bring up Sheet 1 of the plans that has a section through it that I can fill in. So this would be the Phase 1 work and the excavation. You'll see the entrance and the anti-tracking pad right here on the left. So what you'll see essentially on this section here, the existing ground is this dash line running across to the top here, and then it drops off to AV broken to the wetlands as we work down here where the tree line is and is staying. So what we're proposing as part of the excavation is essentially a 15-foot cut, this swath right through here. And what will be left is essentially a relatively flat bottom. It'd be about a 1% grade, so it's fairly flat bottom here. So it has a slight pitch for the stormwater to sheet clove to what this here is, that settling basin that I had talked about, right in this area. So the bowl I was kind of referring to is the side slopes here, which will be stabilized, and then it'll essentially be a flat bottom with a very shallow pitch, about a 1% pitch to allow stormwater to sheet clove to the settling basins. And to reiterate Mr. Sweeney's comments, that flat bottom, the topsoil from the site will remain on the site, the loam from the surface will remain on site, and will be reused to reestablish and stabilize the bottom of that entire excavation and those side slopes. We're proposing a grass seed mix restoration, you know, as this project progresses, it could absolutely be reused as farmland, you know, once the excavation is completed.
Thank you. And then I believe I saw a hand over there and a hand over there, so if you want to fall in line behind the speaker.
Sue Hall, Central Village. I am a member of the Conservation Commission, and our mission by state regulations is to preserve the natural resources of your town. I have been following American Industries, and I think the Rude family could have chosen a different company to be out there to excavate. Why? A year ago, on May 21st, 2021, the first notice of violation sent and work stopped. On June 21st, 2021, in your minutes, notice of violation sent and work stopped. American Industries is prepared to apply for earth excavation permit. On August 10th, 2021, property owner, would be the Rude family, contacted. Work on property has stopped until the proper permits have been pulled and approved. Finally, on December 14th, 2021, 40 trucks were seen leaving that property on that day, heading towards Amazon Warehouse, where I don't know what would they be bringing? I don't know if it was topsoil, or was it rock, or was it sand? No fines ever given to this company. So if you approve this operation of removing these materials from this land, as described in our Plan of Conservation and Development, this land is in a historic part of our town that was named by our native American ancestors, Plainfield. How can you guarantee that this company will follow the compliance? Their compliance is because their past, they have not gotten the proper permits to work.
Again, Steve Topper. 10 to 12 years ago, 15 years ago, was the old Handcraft Corporation, was sold to Yowoski Incorporated with the intent that they were going to put a transfer station in there on Route 12. Well, a survey was done, independent survey. Well, a survey was done, independent survey, I can't tell you who did it, I'm sure it's in your records. The main water course for that whole area runs through there, and they were going to put a dump on top of it. Well, they, once the news got out about what could possibly happen, Yowoski immediately stopped with the plans for the transfer station. Now, if you've got 150 people living in that area with the excavating that's going on right now, and you get people whose wells start going dry, I hope Plainfield's got the money to drill new wells for all these people.
Walter Sweet, Chairman, Conservation Commission. Thank you, Paul, for those comments, but I have to rebut also, the Conservation Commission does not come up here and speak against every project. The town and the faculty have endorsed projects in the past, actually, one was right across the street from where I live, on Sterling Hill Road. Subdivision was proposed, and there were three big lots, and it was brought before our commission, and we all agreed that it was okay to approve this subdivision. And right now, we're also in the process of an open space project for the town. The town just acquired 161-plus acres of open space, and we're endorsing that. We're the last, we are the last protection that you have in your town, as far as open space, any kind of farmland. You think, I don't like coming up here and opposing a lot of things, it's not very easy for me and for our commission, so I think we could get at least some kind of respect that we have. You know, we're here to protect the town, we're here to save what we have left in this town, because the concrete is coming, and even before you, right now, there's a million-square-foot warehouse coming at your commission, and that's one of the next items for a discussion. So anyways, that being said, that's where we are, but our Conservation Commission is trying to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members, and actually, our staff, just, hold on one moment. If there's somebody else that wants to speak, just hold on one moment. This application went through with wetlands, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Was there a previous survey done, and did wetlands review any kind of water survey?
Oh, he's talking about something happened long before I got here. I have no idea.
Okay. Because if there was any kind of environmental survey done previously, depending on the amount of time that's elapsed, it could or may or may not be relevant currently, right?
Right, and you also have to understand that what you was talking about was a transfer station.
Correct, different usage.
Or possibly a dump, I don't know.
Yeah.
Fully different.
Madam Chair?
Yep, hold on one moment. Hold on one moment, there was somebody ahead of you. So, yep, come on up.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, members of the commission and staff. For the record, my name is Rick Roberoe, after to be a professional engineer with Provost Roberoe located here in Plainfield. If anybody's done any study on urban planning, I'm sure most of the folks in the commission are certainly privy to what the Conservation Commission's duties and powers are. I mean, that is basically a macro standard by which the town takes under advisement and writes specific regulations. This application in front of you really is, has to be looked at on the merits of the regulations that are in front of you, and not testimony by folks from the Conservation Commission, that's an advisory commission. They are, quite frankly, an advisory commission in itself, advising the zoning commission for regulations. You folks are a regulatory commission. You make the regulations, you enforce the regulations, you are the folks that look at applications on the merits of the regulations and not of the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is solely an advisory commission, advisory to this board and this staff to write regulations, the regulatory regulations. The application in front of you and a multitude of other applications that I've heard over the course of the last five months have been bashed by the Conservation Commission. Their advisory commission, advisory to you folks, you are the regulatory folks. Spurring, spewing an awful lot of negative pieces that they are controlling what happens in front of this board is not correct. If, in fact, what they'd like to have imposed become regulation, then you take the application on that merit. Right now, this application and a multitude of others need to be taken on the merits of the zoning regs in which you have in front of you. You're the regulatory commission, they're the advisory commission. Perhaps Honorable Chairman and staff could reiterate that, so the general public is not as privy to urban planning and zoning laws in the state of Connecticut, understand that. Thank you.
Okay. So, what I do not want this public hearing to become is a debate about the commission, the Conservation Commission. So if there are comments debating the merits or points of the Conservation Commission, those will be out of order, and we're not going to continue that type of debate in this application. Mr. Sweet had a hand up? If it's debating the points of Conservation Commission, we're done, we're speaking about this application.
Point of order, Honorable Chairman, the bottom line is, they have no regulatory authority, I want you to understand that.
And just told one moment.
Now, I want to go back.
Mr. Sweet, hold one moment, because if you rewind about 10 minutes ago, I did speak to the points that we have regulations based on the framework of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and in that notice of information to the public here, I was indicating that the board members use the Plan of Conservation and Development and the regulations. You'll notice I did not say that we take the advice of the Conservation Commission.
I understand that.
That is not part of our process.
I rebutted the fact.
So we're not going to debate these points.
I rebutted the fact about farmland. That's all I said was, the farmland is still going to be there when it's all said and done.
And that was really?
I wanted to rest the comments on hand grab. I was in office at that time, Yowoski was having trouble getting a permit for a regional transfer station, and they have been friendly with Mr. McDonald, O'Donnell, that owned that building for years, they ended up owning it themselves. They had a thought about putting a transfer station there, came to the town, and the town said we wouldn't support it, and that ended that right there.
Correct, no development.
But that's a separate piece of property, a downing road, and it's a separate piece of property. So, there was never an idea that we were going to pull up wells or any of that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure that facts are facts, okay?
We are speaking about the application before us, not an application that may or may not have happened in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see behind there.
So down into the back of those fields, there's a big pond back there that was natural, but then the turf farm made a figure because they needed irrigation. Now, I grew up there, 1947, and I used to go across that field and then brook, and I used to trout fish. And I couldn't do it no more because the president owned it, kicked everybody out, and then wasn't nobody on his land. So, I am just wondering, what are they going to do to protect that wetland? Because it goes right into Tappo Pond, from Tappo Pond into the Quinabon River, into the Sains River, and out into the south.
Wetlands permit was approved for this, correct?
Correct.
Because the activity is?
Right, so, this is not touching the wetlands, it's stayed well away from the wetlands, and they're going to be excavating down, so it's going to be creating a bowl. Water can't travel uphill, so nothing is going to be reaching the wetlands once they make that initial cut.
And that was reviewed by the Wetlands Commission?
And the town is here.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin Cunningham, 405 Musa Bottom Road. I just have one item. I see all the notations by our town engineer, in favor of the reclaiming, that's fantastic. But I do have a question, just on one item, and it's up in the time. It's the proposal for 43 loads to be removed by the hours Monday through Friday of 7:00 to 7:00. What are the normal uses of, you know, projects like this when we come to a decision on the timing? Do we have something that follows this, or is it something different?
7:00 to 7:00 is?
Is the maximum allowable time.
Okay.
Which it can't scale it out.
I'm just concerned with the winter time for safety. And you know that when, we were talking about like December 23rd, it was totally pitch black at 4:30, and the safety issues had a good concern, so that's my concern on this one. Other than that, I have no problem. Okay, thank you.
So the proposed business hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which would be the maximum allowable. The commission does have the ability to adjust those hours of operation. Are there any other comments from the public? Yep.
My name's Tom Rude, I live here. I hear a lot of talk about conservation, and I'm the sixth generation that lived on this farm. A lot of thought went into this project from our end, and since it's going to be reclaimed back into farmland, it's basically just another transition on the farm that's been transitioning forever. I appreciate that there's concerns about it being a historical piece of property, which it is, you know, I'm the sixth generation standing here, but the fact that it's going back to farmland, it should be good, and we need paved roads, good roads. And American Industries has always done us well, keeping our roads paved, everything going good. Yeah, that's about it. But it took us a lot of thought and consideration to get to this point, to do this. That's it.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions from board members? I'm sorry, yep?
Polly O'Shea, Sterling Hill, Musa. I just have like three inputs. First of all, the cease and desist, why it wasn't that enforced? How deep is the bowl going to end up being off the road? Is it going to be brought back up level, or is it going to have a drop? And the concern of the water, if it's going to affect an aquifer or something like that that feeds the other people's wells? That's my three concerns with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, if you could just reiterate, the bowl is not by the road, it is actually by the wetlands, correct?
It is off the road. You'll see it starts in this area off of, it's about 20 feet off of Route 12, and then it's a 3:1 slope down to the flat, flat area of the excavation.
So it's essentially creating a berm?
Essentially, yes. Yeah, Route 12 will be a berm, so higher than the excavated area down here. It won't be filled back up to the Route 12 elevation like you see today, it'll stay at a lower elevation, roughly, I don't know, about 15 feet down, where that will be restored with the topsoil, and go to a lot of topsoil and, in this prime case. As far as the water is concerned, essentially this site is very flat as it is, so the stormwater that falls on the land essentially infiltrates into the ground as it is now. There's not any contributing watershed surrounding it that adds water to the site, and that will essentially remain the same as what it is now, to what the proposed conditions will be. The stormwater now, falls on the site, infiltrates into the ground, feeds the aquifer primarily with AB Brook on the south end of the property. Essentially, this project will give you to mimic that same stormwater drainage patterns and recharge that aquifer, and continue to feed AB Brook. And as was noted, the Wetlands Commission did review and approve the project, and Robert Musa, a soil scientist and biologist from our office, reviewed the project, they also did not have concerns with groundwater or surrounding water, surrounding these waters in this area. The project is just by an authorized regulated area in a couple of spots, so we are leaving a significant buffer to the wetlands and AB Brook in that area.
Go ahead, yeah. I just have a question. Can you explain to me why the company just decided to dig there and not here to the cease and desist?
I will let the company address that. Pat, you want?
I know, and Pat, you're there, American Industries? I didn't hear the question, so.
She wanted to know why the digging commenced prior to the permit, and then if there were multiple cease and desist issued, why they weren't adhered to.
Yeah, because Rude Farm has been there for so many years, and they thought they were grandfathered prior to zoning, so they said, "Go ahead," and then nobody was able to produce any sort of proof that it happened or registered, so we were under assumption that so once that stopped, we stopped, and that's why I applied.
Sorry, I have another question. You've been in business for how long, and you don't know how, what rules and regulations and zoning is, you don't know?
They're grandfathered places in?
To dig?
To dig, absolutely.
Yeah, it's a non-conforming gravel bank, grandfathering.
I'm sorry.
So, just for history, zoning regulations in the town of Plainfield were enacted in the late 1970s. So farms have activities such as gravel excavation that existed prior to zoning. So if those farms had established gravel excavation, and they continued that excavation without abandoning the use, it becomes a non-conforming grandfathered use. So that's what he's referring to. That's the impression the Rude family, according to him, was operating underneath, and if there was a grandfather, then they would not have to come before us for a special permit, because that use would have been already granted by right, by grandfathering. They indicated they did not have that right. We went through the cease and desist process, which brought us to this application today. Okay.
Oh, you're ignoring the cease and desist, that's all I wanted. And once that happened, you should have known, I would think, that?
Ryan, did they adhere to the cease and desist when you issued it?
Initially, yes, and then there was a hiccup, there was three, three or so days where there was more explanation.
Okay. Do we have a violation schedule for cease and desist violations?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Do we have a violation schedule, a fee schedule? If someone were to violate cease and desist, do we have the ability to issue them a fine or violation?
Well, state statute allows us to issue a fine between $100 and $250 per day, depending on if it's a willful violation, meaning they are blatantly ignoring the cease and desist or not. However, that only comes into play once you get into the court system, so only a judge can award a that.
Okay, so the commission has no ability to assess and give fines without first going to a court? So because this applicant tried to make it right by coming before us with an application, no court procedure was followed for it?
Right.
Okay.
You do not have the ability to ticket somebody for a violation.
Okay, understood. Just for clarification for anybody who thinks we're not following the regulations and rules.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into what there exists, if there's any?
Yep, understood.
Big battle, whatever, so we just started.
All right, so, thank you. Board members, I'm still going to stick with my initial suggestion, that we review Plan of Conservation and Development, review the regulations. Also, they are asking for maximum business hours of Monday to Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So I would like to take the time over the next month to review that information. Staff, I'm going to ask for your recommendation if the public hearing should be left open for consideration of that information, or if it would be advisable to close the public hearing, because none of those items would impact the application or information presented to the public.
I would say to be on the safe side, keep it open, but you can still receive information.
Okay. So, given that recommendation from staff, I'm going to ask board members to consider continuing this application, the public hearing, to the next meeting.
I would like to make that.
I have a motion by June to continue the public hearing. I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hey, this public hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting.